All right, we go ahead and call the meeting to order here at 1:00 for our July 28th Building Committee meeting. Each of you have a packet that we put together with some information Mr. Levesey and myself put together earlier in the week for you. Our objective today is to go ahead and to give you an update of the LFK status, the renovations, as well as to provide some information regarding Blue Ridge Tech, the roof replacement. Also, some of the other items we'll look at is some of our grounds and maintenance and summer custodial updates, projects that we've been extremely busy over the summer trying to get things ready for our upcoming school year. So, the first form there in your packet is your agenda, then followed that will be notes that Mr. Levesey and I put together to go over. And there's also a breakdown of some funding options or some funding information in this regarding LFK, as well as a PowerPoint that we decided it was easier possibly to show you pictures closer than on the screen because some things get a little blurry when they go on the screen. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and start with the LFK renovations update, and Mr. Levesey will be referring to the informational items form that we have here. So, Mr. Levesey?
Okay, thanks. First, LFK renovations. One, got through the first major milestone, i.e., we have 100% construction documents and specifications. Very pleased that Grim and Parker was able to meet that timeline we kind of initially laid out when we had them under contract. We did hold the pre-bid meeting on July 12th. A little disappointed the number of contractors that turned out specifically general contractors were walking to the room. We had about six or seven people. I saw all this is great. Only two of them were general contractors, Lance Construction of Winchester and Taft Construction were the two general contractors on board. Now, with that said, that doesn't mean that we could not, that we could not possibly get more than two bids because the pre-bid conference was not mandatory. And discussion with the architect, you know, in the early planning stages, you know, sometimes if a contractor just can't make it to that, you know, we don't want to cancel them out. So, we left it as a non-mandatory pre-bid. So, there is a possibility we could get additional bids in. Bid opening is next Wednesday, 1:30 here in this conference room. It's a public bid opening. All are welcome to attend. As I mentioned briefly, again, the overall timeline that's presented here in the information item is still pretty much on track, so I am pleased with that. So, getting bids open this week, school board approval, you know, sometime August, I would imagine, maybe August, latest would be the board meeting in September, and then providing contractor with a notice to proceed. That window with that timeline from September to December is a good window, gives them time to really figure out the lead times, all material equipment we're going to need, staging logistics at the school site, et cetera. So, we're still on track with that with a tentative construction start of January 2023. Okay? Moving right along with that, as part of the permit approval process, you know, we submitted to the county inspections and permit office for review and comment. Of course, they have to use a third party, A&E or firm that does this type of work. We did receive the proposal from Mr. David Bean last week, week before last, I think. A little higher than I had anticipated. Honestly, I thought several thousand dollars. The full review is over $11,000, as I stated here. So, Buck and I think that this can be covered by the grant also, and it's part of the design and permitting fee, so that's just something we'll have to address, but...
So, that plan review is to make sure that what Grim and Parker have specified meets county...
...has specified, meets county code, Virginia State Building Code.
So, does every major project coming into Warren County have to, the county uses a third party for plan review?
You know, to my knowledge, I would say yes. I, you know, honestly, I'm not quite sure what happened with AS Roads. That project was already designed and out for bid when I came on board, so I don't know if we paid that third party when AS Roads was designed or not.
I do not know whether you paid that fee or not at that time.
At that time, yeah.
Because that was, when was that, the year?
It was 1918.
Yeah, that was before me.
Yeah, it was. So, again, I anticipated some costs which would be going directly by the school division, but I just had not anticipated $11,000. Our architect Grim and Parker thought that was a fair reasonable fee for that task, you know, given the scope of the project, so...
What time is the...
1:30.
1:30 Wednesday.
The bid opening, yeah. 1:30 Wednesday afternoon here in this conference.
Well, that's a shame you didn't spend plan review money and put it on someone else, but I guess that's the Warren County limitations on building plans.
Now, talking with Mr. Bean, the county has been very good in not charging us the actual permit fee. We don't pay the permit fee. Example, town affron role, I pay a permit fee, you know. The county's been good to us in that respect. We never had to pay the permit fees, but this third party, I, you know, I don't know if that's the route they're taking, you know, because the first, the town was going to take over all inspections and permit review, and that kind of blew up and it went back to the county. So, you know, we were kind of midstream with that when that took place.
Can we sub that out to another county?
I did ask about other vendors, sub it out to another county or another firm?
Yeah, another county.
I don't believe so. I don't...
Why would you want to do that? It might be less expensive and...
I don't think we can. I've never had that question asked before. I'm not sure why you would ask it before.
Neither. I'll call Wally and ask him.
Wally, uh...
Wally, no.
Oh.
Deputy, you're up there.
Loud County. Well, I know Loud one. They'd want 25 hours.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, I don't want to get off the truck, but I'm going to ask him.
So, any questions with regard to the renovations, you know, we certainly keep everybody abreast as soon as we start to move forward, you know, because speed will start to pick up on this project real quick.
We've already made adjustments and so forth with space and the students and so forth with fifth grade. We've worked that out with Warren County Middle, our transportation, and we've worked out food service so that we can have at least a pod, a spot to start, two spots to start with.
So, we'll get us an update on that for...
That piece of his phone that plays very quickly.
And before we move on to the Blue Ridge Tech, I also put in here a spreadsheet that Mr. Levesey and I have worked on that sort of breaks out expenses and those types of things and some of the revenue and so forth that we could help use for the project itself. The final construction estimate of the project itself was $15,824,290. And then I put in the A&E fee for that project of $929,258. I also included in this, and I know it's not necessarily LFK, but it's Blue Ridge Tech, is that we use part of the grant to be able to do the cost of engineering for that facility for the HVAC. So, I included in there, although there are two different projects, some of the sources, some of that funding is very similar. Greg had just went over the third party review. I just added that in there today of a cost that we are looking at to make sure that a grant will be able to cover that. So, the estimated total cost of construction is $16,826,796 for those expenses. And then in the middle column, on the very far column on the right are just simply comments that may relate to whatever is in the expense or revenue part. But in the revenue part, to identify the grant funding that's included and if you, that we would be referring to, that we could use for the project, if you drop your eyes just slightly down on that very same right-hand side, it will break down each of the funding that we receive for grants and how much they are, and that's how we came up with the $10,198,973. I believe that the county had posted or was working with some of the county contributions would be 2.2 million toward the project. There's some carryover from last year and so forth. I think part of that we used for buses, and then there was a million in that carryover. And our current carryover, Mr. Ballantyne said he will know something more in September. We go through our audits and various different types of things to find out the amount, but he's estimated about a 1.3 million. And then we added in there almost, we called it, we removed alternative options, but really to some degree, it's like value engineering. When we started this project, we asked the architects and so forth to start looking at certain type of items that could, that could be a significant or at least some savings that really would not affect the project as much. And so, they identified eight different items in here that would be add-on alternatives. So, as part of the revenue, I've removed those items and how much they cost to help give us revenue. So, I don't know, Mr. Levesey, if you just want to go through each of those add-ons and just briefly explain?
Is that the question coming off the 16?
Yes, yes. Yes.
So, before Mr. Levesey started, can you talk about, because this was a reduction in the projected cost from the original projection, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
So, when we got the, what was it, Greg, the 75%?
75% construction drawings.
Construction drawings that they, and they looked at some, some numbers, and so they reduced the overall cost of the projection. And so, this is reflective of their 75% and what they, when they looked at other projects that are similar to scope and size, that what pricing was, and so they were able to say, okay, this is more of true what we think it's going to be. And so, that was a reduction from around, Greg, do you remember what the first initial price was? Was it around...
18, 17, 18. Between, not quite 18, 18 was the initial estimate, right?
Yeah. So, so this is a reduction after 75% construction drawings being completed and them reviewing and looking. So, that has helped us to close that funding gap with what they're thinking as far as our bids would be. Now, just remember, those bids, next, you know, when they open, that's going to be our true cost, so we can, even though this is a new projection, we still don't know. They may come in even lower, which would be great. So, if they do, that closes that gap even further.
Do you have an expectation or a guess as to where they're going to come in at?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Bean, I really don't with this market.
I know it's crazy out there.
Well, I did, I had a call from an architect last week that just had a recent bid opening in Jefferson County, West Virginia. I don't know any of the general contractors, but it came in five million over their estimated budget. So, it's like, well, that's, I don't understand, that's over there, and that's just then, I'll say somewhat the local market said he was shocked at that. That was unsolicited, OWP or ZMM just called me to see where we were on this one, because they had just gotten that bid.
Well, I'd rather not get slapped in the face in case I was ready for it.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, you know, as we looked at, you know, what we call the value engineering or the add alternate options, what do we not have to have to renovate this building? One, it kind of breaks my heart a little bit because kitchen equipment, cafeterias, they always seem to take the shot. You never get equipment updated or replaced. Ralph, there's still original equipment in Falkir County High School of 1963. So, you know, you hate to take that out, but we've met with the situation to talk about the things we might not be able to do over there.
Cafeteria funds paid for that, though? Because you've got all those extra cafeteria funds.
You know, that I don't, we have talked about...
They could pay for the equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a freezer or something like that, and I talked to Nicole about doing that.
Okay. So, get our CIP cost down and then take it from where we have the existing money.
Yeah, and they definitely need to, you know, additional freezer space, walk-in refrigerator space there. In fact, if you remember, one of the new pieces, I believe it was the freezer, is actually going to stick off the back of the building. Because we're doing kind of a combination, half inside and half is going to be exterior. So, that's one of the items. Cafeteria modifications, you know, that, for lack of better terms, cafeteria, you know, it's got the small stage built into it, very seldom used, so we said, we thought we'd turn that into, you know, construction of storage space for the schools or for the school. As you can see, that was a pretty hefty little price tag, not horrible, but almost $60,000. Gymnasium between operating partition to separate the gym, stage curtains in there because you have a small stage in that one also. Flooring replaced in the gym and the stage, pretty good size number. One of my preferences as far as especially elementary school gyms, if we can find the money to replace the flooring with a cushioned sports floor versus a DCT floor, it's no maintenance and it's safer for the students.
It's a lot better than that tile or...
My concern with that is we're looking at $123,000 here, and we're talking about replacing an existing gym floor, and then we've got another elementary school who doesn't even have a gym.
Yeah, right.
So, I feel like the priority of this money would be better spent getting Ellos Morrison a gym, and if we have to circle back and replace gym flooring later, it could be done then.
That's true.
Something to think about. Library work into the modifications, casework, reception desk, windows and flooring could certainly, we could certainly let that be do as funding became available for that. I mean, it's casework, shelving, et cetera, and the admin offices. Solar daylighting devices, i.e., solar tubes built in, you know, that building doesn't have a lot of natural lighting, just because it's vintage, you know, schools built when they could sell these. So, those solar tubes do add quite a bit of lighting to the classroom environment, but again, that's something that could be added. Classroom pod entry assemblies, that's just more, I would say decorations, kind of a reworking of the wall space and the hallway as you walk into the pods.
I remember seeing that.
Yeah, remember that in the presentation, they had display boards and they had, I don't know, shelving or something small, but that was part of that pod entry assembly rework.
Something about the electric mechanical room was right next to that or something?
There's one of them, that is correct, right. And then last big ticket items, of course, all the windows and doors. We will keep all the door hardware in the base bed because it needs to be replaced, one to be ADA.
Is the door hardware going to be hard accessible?
Well, the exterior doors, yes, though we'll have part of the door access controls, we'll include, you know, card access, additional card meters for it.
I think if there's some kind of grant for that with the security issue.
There is, that's covered. Matter of fact, you know, we did the initial car installation, I say initial, for the elementary schools under the received security equipment grant this year.
And we, AS Roads, because of its timeframe, that it's renovated, allow for that.
Yeah, we agreed that it is.
The security grant of which we applied for and got it, and you're working on the other four elementary schools on those entrances.
Right.
So, we're looking at right now, trying to make up $869,500 so it can be what the county needs it to be for funding, right? So, if we were to cut the other stuff, keep the exterior windows and doors, that puts us at 819,167, so we're, we're pretty close. We would have $50,000 then, and then circle back and have cafeteria fund paid for the upgrades to the kitchen. I'd say we're pretty well good to go there then.
It's real close, like you say.
And you don't, you don't know until you get the...
You open the bid.
Yeah, I've worked on a few just projects of my own, as we all do, and I've been amazed at what prices have come in for just those type of things. So, for something this large, it'd be interesting to see what those votes will be.
So, Shocky didn't show up back, going back, Shocky didn't show up to the pre-bid?
No, and Shocky was one of the firms that had been in touch with the architect, all threw out the design, when they're going to hit the street, we want it, we want it, we want to do it. And then two days before, I think they called the architect, said, we're just too loaded up, like, too busy. But he said, he also said, Shocky does that, though.
Yeah, and I might do that and then come in.
We're past that.
Yeah, I believe, I believe they're based out of Woodbridge, they've done work in Falkir, Prince William, Spotsylvania County. I think they've even moved into Loud County a little bit. They did the, if you remember, media center addition at C.O.D. Middle, and then doing the classroom addition out there now, too, so.
Well, that's a pretty big project.
Small paper.
Had a call paper?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been around for a while.
Okay. So, we're close. We're close if we check those out.
So, Greg, we'll talk a little bit next about our Blue Ridge Technical Center roof replacement, of which I believe, we were just waiting on a few things to be delivered and those type of things, and there's, we're going to go over, there's some glue that has...
Well, we've had a couple of things. One, we knew back when we put the invitation for bid out on the street, issues with the supply chain. So, when we looked at dates, milestone dates for construction start completion, we were going to be lenient with the substantial completion because we just didn't know the time. We hadn't long for bid. We didn't know what the supply chain was going to look like for roofing materials. We had heard things. So, we went ahead and set the substantial completion by the end of October. Now, that's not ideal because we're well into the school year, but giving that building its footprint the size of this roof, this is certainly a replacement. That can be done by students in school with minimal disruption. So, with that said, we put it out for bid, low bidder was Blackstone Roofing, who actually in turn, when he was awarded the bid, notified that he had the majority of material in stock, all the rubber, most of the insulation board, et cetera. What he didn't have was the glue, of all things, because it's a fully deodorant membrane roof. But during that process, we went ahead and applied for building permit and required zoning permit on the town also, in addition to the county building. We just got the town zoning permit back on July 13th. That's okay. So, now we have a tentative start of August 22nd. Good weather, weather permitting, you know, he can knock this out in three weeks, weather permitting. You know, he's going to have an eight-man crew. We held a pre-construction meeting just this week with Jay Baker, the principal, talking about all the access points, what we can do, what we can't do, et cetera, so we're prepared to kick off on the 22nd of this month. You know, again, good weather will be all right, you know. He's certainly not going to take off any roof if they're calling for a 30-plus percent chance of rain. That's a day we're just going to wipe out and have to forget it, so.
Couple of weekends in there for any delays?
Not really. I mean, we've got substantial completion through the end of October, which should be in real good shape, you know. And projects of this size, we typically will not put in any liquidated analysis. And some things without contractors' control, and we didn't, actually on this, because this is really the scope of the project and cost. So, but I'm excited to get this one done. I will tell you, that same architect that reached out to me this week about our bid and what he had seen in Jefferson County knows this roofer very well. This is our first time on the barrel with it. He said, top-notch young front, has won a lot of projects and does phenomenal work. So, I'm just glad to hear that. We have to go lowest-most responsive. They're a lot of times you don't know who you get. I mean, you check references, but it's nice to hear from somebody else that this one's a go-to.
Do you have any concerns over the blue? I mean, that was a major thing.
Yeah, no, it's there now, so.
Okay, so you already verified that.
He's guaranteed, he's coming in on the 22nd.
All right, and I believe, so the supplies and so forth, we've had that on the, we've had that on site for quite some time.
Now, weren't you short some of the panels?
Some of the IO board, the ISO board, there were a few pieces short, but...
That's, that's been resolved?
Yeah, in fact, it was three weeks ago, I think, or two or three, and that came in, so.
Thank you.
He's ready to rock, and we're ready to get that one done, too, so. On to the next one. Next one, Building Committee, you're aware of this, additional, you know, new metal fencing for E. Wilson Elementary. We brought this to full board back in June of this year, ordered the project to Hercules Fencing Corporation, if they were the low bidder, as you know. We initially had a 10-week lead time. They actually, they were cut two weeks off of it, were scheduled, he's scheduled to receive it first week in August. He said possibly the second, but I'm, they're telling me he'll be by door first week in August. So, something down, the next week or so, we'll sit down with school administration, load the construction schedule over there. Again, unfortunate, we're going to have to do some work when students are in school, but we can work around recess times, et cetera, so.
And we can isolate those spots as well.
Yeah, and part of the process of, you know, the pre-work, that old chain link fencing on Chester Street and backs up the Union behind that playground, we had to spray that entirely to get all the old vegetation out in preparation for the new fence. I think there's a couple of small little tree stumps in there we've got to get out, but that's the reason that whole back fence was sprayed the way it was. We wanted to kill it because it was pretty impossible back there, so. But that'll be nice to get that up. Unfortunately, Dr. Ballinger, the replacement gate, the damaged gate, is not on the same lead time.
And we've been waiting on that thing for nine months?
Now, I took it from the first contractor, he was 20 weeks, I took it from him, because this was, I can get you the same thing in a quicker time. He said it should be three weeks behind.
Because that, a bus hit that ditch early, early in the school year.
Early, early in the school year.
And we had it on order since then.
Now, in addition to the shorter lead time, there's also a lesser price.
Okay, well, that's good. So, at least we're going to get something out of it, all right?
I ordered cluster mailboxes in January, and they're still not in. And I called the guy, and they'll be in in two weeks. You know what they're short of? The powder coat for the paint.
Stuff you wouldn't think to be...
Right. So, yeah, it's, it's reasonable that that kind of stuff, yeah.
Anyway, we're excited to get that, the last one, the heat difference and stuff.
That was nice. That was very nice.
Get that lead up chain link out of there.
Yeah.
So, on to the next one. I asked Buck to put this information on here. Wasn't sure if the committee members were familiar with what Governor Youngkin had announced about some additional funding available, basically to create first response maps for first responders that have the school division must now have. This is a great idea. What this does, first, the governor appropriated $6.5 million, you know, for this critical mapping for school divisions. Basically, it's not so much a true grant as it is first come, first served, whoever applies gets it until the $6.5 million is gone. And it uses kind of a military-type technology and a grid layout when they, not only you're psyched, but you're actually building footprint of your school, you know, you've got letter A, you know, number 13, you know. So, what we're doing is we've applied for the grant, they've allowed to up to $3,500 per school. These are already state approved contractors that come out and do the mapping for you. It'll be very useful for first responders from a law enforcement standpoint. I, you know, I'm sure their joint communications center or dispatch will have copies of all the floor plans, but I think it'll be able to be able to put into the officers cruiser also.
That's correct.
On their NDT, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, they can look up and pull up the floor plan if they're responding to an emergency, they can pull it right up on the cruiser, say, okay, it's LFK, it's room 29. The mapping also requires us to put in certain features of the building, not only our camera locations, which we're going to put, because we want law enforcement to know what cameras are looking at while they're at the dispatch, but firearm system locations, Knox box, key locations. locations, utility shut offs, that type of thing. In addition to that, as they're looking at the floor plan, the building floor plan, they're also looking at the site with, the site plan with it. So it's one, one floor plan, if you wanna call it, that they're looking at, but also it includes the site, roadways on your site, accessory buildings, concession stands, restrooms, and all this is labeled for their use. We did this years ago in Falltier. I actually had two separate plans because this technology wasn't available at the time, so. It's a CAD system, so we'll be putting layers of information on that the first responders will use.
It will be more accessible for those who, be it a law enforcement or our first responders and various different type of things. And because currently, you know, you have four plans of your school, but that's normally in paper form. And sometimes the paper forms, as anything else, kinda loses its print a little bit. And this will give an opportunity for those who have to communicate and identify a particular section of the building, area of the building, or those type of things. So we're excited about it. We've already, we've, we've spoken with law enforcement, they're excited about that. We've had meetings and so forth, Google meetings, virtual meetings with the company and so forth that provides this type of technology. It is pretty much militarily, from a military standpoint, based type. But really, we just need to provide for them an opportunity to, to, to see our facilities as well as the floor plans. And they're, and what, which was amazing, I, I thought, is that they said, they being the company who would, who would create this, just needed an original set of plans. However, however we gave that to them, they can work with that and, and build that, so.
They like the identification of the outbuildings, because that's where somebody's gonna run the eye.
Correct.
You know, so that's, that's.
That's because having a buck, buck is the same. I, I love that idea, because I remember when I went through the Falltier, that Googler, whatever you lay your hand on, you get the separate shop, so. And it was helpful then, but having it in this digital format.
That's, that's great. Now, are we in their system as to our school's system is gonna be getting this? Or it's like you said, it's first come, first served?
Yeah, no, we are in, we have applied.
Okay.
So when we go to comply, this was a simple application process, most times D C J S isn't too difficult. But anyway, yeah, our school division was already in there, so we just have to select that when I'm filling out the application. And it was funny, I noticed one of our schools was missing, the First Five Mind and Great Future, so they've added that back into us because we need to include that one. So it's there. When we met with the contractor for D C J S, he did the brief, and of course, he unfortunately wasn't aware of where D C J S stood in the funding, what they had left, or what the time was, you know, how long it would take for them to get us noticeable approval, so.
We, we, you filled out that application pretty much within a day or so of that meeting that we had. And that they identified that places of which could qualify for this particular grant would be those of where students, students would be located during the daytime for classes and et cetera. So that's why our 11 sites were all qualified for that.
That's just one of those, we hope funding is still there, we, you know, piece of that pie, because that, that would be very, very beneficial. Now, I think it goes without saying that just everybody knows, these aren't floor plans that we share with the department. School division is not gonna post it on website, we're not gonna put it in handbook. I mean, this is, you know, for internal school units, I mean, parts of security plan crisis management should share.
Can these things provide an opportunity for when, if a situation were to occur, wherever that situation may be, rather than flipping through multiple different notebooks and various different type of things like this, that this could be at the palms of hand, instantly electronic?
Yeah, that way we have a consistent floor plan for each school. From schools, I have single line hand drawings, some schools I've got a little nicer floor plan. So when we do a fire evacuation, I was on what, you know, the same plan in every building, you know, it's just helpful to have that.
Did they give you a timeline as to whether?
No, we asked the contractor that question, you know, initially he said it was pretty fast, but I think there's been a change in top management of D C J S just recently or something with the director. So he thought it might slow down a little bit.
Okay.
You know, but.
Thank you.
I'd like to think inside of a month, they have some work to do. Glad to see how that goes.
Greg, before you get to summer projects and those type of things, would we wanna just go to grounds?
Yeah, we kinda, yeah. We did quite a, a whole lot on grounds, but just give everybody an update.
We'd put together, well, as I mentioned earlier, well, it's gonna be a PowerPoint, but it, it just, it's a little bit better if it's this closer to you than up on the screen. So in there, to kinda go over some of our current status of, of where we are on our grounds. So in, in May of 2022, basically was, we've provided notice of the termination and provide ground services for the, the high schools. And we have, Greg will probably add to this a little bit later, we have went out, interviewed and so forth for two ground keepers at each of our high schools. And we've been able to provide a, an offer, and those two candidates, their names will go before the board at our August 3rd meeting to be approved. And I think one can start closer to the earlier part of August, and then the second is, it's later in August.
Correct.
That they'll be able to, to start. So the services that we're currently receiving would, at our other schools, will be mowing and weed eating, things that are not included, pesticide applications, trimming of shrubs, bushes, trees, weed removals and mulch for beds around the elementary playgrounds. But I do believe that Mr. Levacy had mentioned that as far as our elementary schools and our grounds are the mulching and those type of things for playgrounds, that we're in fairly good, good shape there.
Well, we need to re-mulch it, you know, we should, you know, we're required by state safety standards to maintain 12 inch depth of wood fiber, as they refer to it, under the fall areas of your equipment. Now, if you have a huge play area that doesn't have the equipment, you don't need 12 inches, but under your actual equipment, you need 12 inches of mulch, and 16. So we're in the process of doing that. Right now, we gave them a partial red bid for us last year, but with the contract coming up and not including the mulch, we had to take it on. Just like everything else, I started talking to our mulch vendor early July, soon as I can get delivery in September. One, he is that bolt, firm by the name of J K Enterprises, so. But yeah, we've got them on tap to come in and begin that for us. We really don't do a lot of mulching per se around the school itself in beds. A lot of times principals of the schools will, their P T O will bag a few bags, buy a few bags of mulch. We typically, in parts of where I did, some of the traffic islands at some of the schools where we had islands in the parking lots, you know, some of those required some mulch. But our biggest purchase of mulch is going to be for the playgrounds. Now, remember, we have two elementary schools with multiple playgrounds. L F K has three.
That's Russi.
And Russi has one monster one. I call them one monster on the side of the hill, but it takes a lot of, a lot of cubic yards for those two, but the others all have one inch, so, you know, this stuff, I was current contract price, now this is delivered and blown into the play area, there's no, no handling of the material. It's about $34 a yard. And that's current contract price, and that's through Alamo. I've never wanted to use Fairfax now, this contractor's up too far, I haven't been able to deliver, so, so we have to ride Alamo.
So, and when is delivery, I missed the date?
Early September.
Early September.
He said if it breaks in any sooner, he will let me know, but. So we'll make sure, and I think most of the playgrounds are of good, good enough shape, you know, students can use them, we're not down to bear dirt, you know, rocks or anything, so. And actually, you look at them every year, if you've got good drainage under those playgrounds, that mulch will last every other year, you know, it just doesn't, you know, if it gets a lot of water city, it'll certainly break pretty fast, but it's good drainage. And I don't have the indication that we don't have good drainage under most of our playgrounds, so, that's kinda where we're going at.
I know your zero term mowers came in in June.
Yeah, and they got them dirty already, but that's okay. We're gonna give Mr. Cup a harder time yesterday, a couple of horses that mowed. But anyway, those came in, everybody loves them, I mean, it's a good piece of equipment. Schools have been very gracious in helping us out with the stadium fields, you know, athletic directors, they want those fields mowed, so. A Ds have been mowing, has Ken Canish mowed, I know he offered.
Yeah, probably also one of us will.
So they've been helping us out to, to get us through this transition, so they've been mowing. We have used contracted temporary services for the high schools until we get our new ones on board. He was actually the low bidder, or the second lowest bidder when we went out to bid the groundskeeper. Lowest bidder declined a few temporary services for us, so. He couldn't give the whole contract, he didn't wanna do any of it, so I'm like the second lowest. So we've used them twice now, and I will have to go one more time for Skyline High School because that new hire won't be on board here in time, so. It's not terribly priced, he's come in with no wrestling, eight people, nine people, a lot of people, and we've done all weekends, and they've knocked an entire, the sites out in one night, either Saturday or Sunday, so they're moving. But it's kept, it's kept the school looking more than present as far as the grass. Kinda where we're at, also the current status, you know, our staff is working, has been the last couple of weeks. Two of our people did nothing but doing the groundskeeping, were pulling weeds, spraying weeds, trimming trees, trimming bushes, which you see some of the pictures here. One of the things, I talked about the mulch for the elementary school playgrounds, but they also were required to maintain our stormwater retention ponds and rain gardens, as I refer to them. You know, those are monitored by the Department of Environmental Quality, and you can see from the photos, there's some of ours that need some work. The first photos, if you wanna walk through, is Blue Ridge Tech, that nice little hill stairs you walk down and go into the main entrance, that's what you're looking at. And you see some trees and bushes on photo number three of Blue Ridge Tech. I've talked with Jane Baker, and we may just take those bushes out, they're not really an ornamental bush, they're just more of a nuisance right there on the hill, and they're getting the size they should come out. You know, there are state standards as to plant materials you have around school, how close to the building, how low the limb should be, et cetera. Not that these are presenting that, but it's more of a line of site issue with these, because I think, is Blue Ridge Tech used for the G E D program at night?
It has been.
It has been? And there's been some concern about walking out at night and walking behind big bushes back here that someone could just jump out, so. There's a possibility of us getting those out of there. The second page is Skyline Middle School, that's just one of the parking lot islands that needs to be cleaned up and treated. That's a, the next picture, number two there, is actually the front entrance after we trimmed all the bushes and everything, going up the stairs to the old historic entrance. We actually had, exaggerate and say 20 foot high vines, one of our front of the building, four feet wide. So all that's been cleaned up. And that's amazing to me because that vine, those vines grew in that building with the year, because we just painted that entire front quarter coat last year. And it wasn't a vine, one on that building, and in a year's time, it was 20 plus feet up from the south, it was like, I just couldn't believe it. So, Skyline Middle School has been cleaned up. There's a couple of other photos there. Photo number three, just in case you wanted, there were two large bushes right there on the corner, as you come up the main drive, you go right to the original front entrance or go straight ahead to the new main entrance. That, there were two big bushes right there on the corner that just created a blind spot. It was, so I talked with the principal, Bobby Johnson, he said, Greg, I'm okay to take those out of there. I'm okay with that too, but I mean, it's gonna look much better, so we'll get that overseeded and cleaned up. Photo number four, and I wanted to bring this one to your attention, all those lovely maple trees we have down at the road level or street level. One, we've got several that need some serious deadwooding. One of the, and they're huge maples, beautiful trees, but one of them, probably a third of the tree is dead inside. So when I go to clean that up, that tree's gonna look awfully strange. And then there's some other limbing up type of deadwooding we need to do. I'm bringing that to your attention because I guess of the historical significance of that building. Somebody in the neighborhood may say, what are you doing, or why are you cutting on those trees? Well, they're getting to the point now, the size they are, and again, if they're dying out, we've gotta get the dead material out of them, so.
Yeah, and it will obviously affect the trees. It's on the backside of the tree that's down there on the corner as you turn to come up to the school, but that whole backside looks fairly, fairly dead.
Yeah.
And along the bank, and down in that area too, where there's some evergreen growth and those type of things, I know your guys have gone in to kinda clean up some of that and.
It's not much of an evergreen left, and I'm gonna recommend getting that out and putting some smaller blue junipers or yews or something.
And we'll put together like an erosion management type plan, because when we take those out, that's a, that's a hill that just drops off on that corner.
Ah, it's steep.
It's steep. So until we can get something else to grow there, we're just gonna have to, we're gonna leave some of those evergreens that we currently have there until we can.
Yeah.
Get together a plan so that we can put those in there, so the erosion and so forth, because it's, it's all coming downhill at that point.
Yeah.
It itself is downhill, but behind it is downhill.
It's catching it all.
It's catching it all.
Yeah, and I know using an erosion mat, we can put on to help when we get to that process, so. Next page was Russi Jeffries Elementary, some of the courtyards and what I call the rain garden out front. Similar to the retention pond, these are designed to have vegetation, certain types of plant material in them, but nothing else. This is one too, just like with the stormwater retention, if the growth gets to be too much in there, the drainage capability is greatly impacted, so we've gotta get that cleaned up. I mean, you know, the rain guards are nice because they do have planned vegetation in them, but if you don't maintain them, they look like any other field. The backside of that page, Russi Jeffries Stream 3 is another shot of the rain garden. You see the inlet, the riprap rock with the curb cut out, that's totally grown over, so again, if I can't take the water, it's not gonna get to the rain garden. Russi Jeffries number four is just a recent shot, I think yesterday, of the courtyard over Russi Jeffries Elementary. See a junk tree weed growing in there. Skyline High School, actually overall, is not that bad a shape, but I did forget to tell the contractor to mow the hill where they have the S H S logo up on the hill, so we've got to rework that one a little bit, that's grown out of shape. And again, one of the traffic or parking islands at Skyline High School up in the football stadium, and they're all about the same level, there's multiples islands there, gotta work on that. Transportation's another one, that needs some serious work. There's five photos there, and I really failed to get the correct photo, the tree line, but as you come into transportation site, that tree line on the right hand side, that's part of the park service, correct? And we can and cannot trim those trees. I forget what I heard about that.
I don't think that you can.
I don't, it's not our property.
So that does, you know, it looks a little shabby over there, but it's like, I've been told we can't touch it.
That's the way I understand it.
Yeah. They're pretty picky about what we do, I think Aaron said, you cut that one one more time, with all these federal park rangers showing you these doorstep, you're like, you gotta be kidding me.
It's an instinct they must have.
Good.
I don't think there's cameras out there.
Warren County Middle School, actually, Warren County Middle School's in good shape. Again, their rain gardens are starting to get well beyond what's acceptable as far as the growth approved by D E Q. I will tell you just for your information, just last year, we got the Department of Environmental Quality to sign off on all the retention ponds and rain gardens at Warren County Middle School. Without their sign off since original building construction, the county is not able to issue, was not able to issue the final building occupancy permit to us.
Oh, wow.
And each year, we did not have that blessed by D E Q. The fee wasn't horrendous, Buck, I'm thinking it's somewhere 800 to $1,000 we had to pay every year because we did not have these Warren County Middle School ponds approved. That, all that paperwork's been done late last year, just a young woman from D E Q, we brought her back out again, went through the whole scenario, getting it timed on when they could cut it and when she could get up there was the cap, because that's when she needs to see it, you know what I mean? So all that's got done, I need to follow up with building inspections and permits. She said she notified them that they can issue us our final building occupancy permit to that building. And when was that school open?
Which one?
Warren County.
2000. Two thousand, uh, seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah, two thousand seven.
So hopefully we can close that door on that one. And last photo, I believe is Warren County, well, H J Barber and Warren County High School. Both of those, you can take a look at the retention ponds, uh, at both of those schools. And of course, the little traffic going down the football stadium. But, uh, believe it or not, actually like two years ago, I think the first summer, they had the grounds maintenance. They had this retention pond cleaned for H J Barber. They brought the equipment in, got it cleaned, got it, and there it sits today. So, and then Warren County's, uh, it's pretty rough too, so. They're just labor intensive to clean up and maintain it until they're at this point.
Did I miss it or, um, E Wilson Morrison's not in there?
I didn't have any pictures of it. I don't know why I didn't, because I knew we were already working over there.
Okay.
Uh, and we had done, uh, as I mentioned, as part of the fencing project, we went over spraying, killing vines, weeds, et cetera, on all the fences. We know we're going to be yanking out. Uh, and we also had sprayed and treated the front of the school, the flower beds, et cetera. So we have all this dead material in there, uh, and we're getting ready to pull that out. I will tell you, some people would argue yes and no. The product we use doesn't shrink the weed itself. It just kills it. So no matter what the size, it's not like the Roundup. Or Roundup, actually, it's shrink the weed and just, but I think we all knew the controversy with Roundup. You see the commercial on T V. You can get a fortune. Huh? You can get a fortune. Yeah, that's what I've been told. So that was one of the reasons that we still got dead brown material hanging around. Uh, I believe E Wilson was sprayed two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
About two weeks ago, and it took about a week for it to really start to kill it. So when winter, this week, we had a tree limb fall right next door, uh, on our, uh, our tree that fell on the property next door. We're getting ready to clean that up. So that, those moats beds and everything will be cleaned up before the school starts.
So you are going to pull the dead stuff?
So we are, but Greg is, Greg is happy to use, uh.
We're using our staff. Studio and our staff.
So actually what we're, what we're doing to try to.
Well, well, if they willing to help us, we're going to take over.
That's because we don't have the staff, so we're having to pull people from other areas. So I think your maintenance journey, then they're going out and doing that. So these are your plumbers, your electricians.
Traveling bushes, pulling weight.
People that, that we may need doing some other things, and if they, if there's a breakdown, they're going to have to stop doing that to go fix, fix something. Um, and then, um, you know, so we're pulling stuff. And then I know that they just talked about doing an extra contract with, uh, or, or paying extra for some, um, Sedexo employees this Saturday and look on the hand. So these are things that, so this is a thing that we, we didn't budget for. That, that we're, we're, we're paying for to make sure our schools look nice.
Sedexo did the cleanup for us last Saturday.
Did a park cleanup.
A park cleanup, yeah, on the front of the school.
So.
But yeah, uh, just so you know, Mr. Kreske reached out to us today.
Yes.
And said, hey, I've, I've heard and I'll get back to you before the end of the day. So we'll just, and we work with Brad.
I know that we're working through whatever concerns that anybody's having and that's, that's the good part.
Uh, we got a good head start on it. So I, I think with our help too, we can get it in good shape. Yeah, because we all want.
Are we going to get the big holly tree off the building that E Wilson?
I hadn't planned that now. That's kind of, I haven't even talked to Lisa about removing any stuff. Is there some big plan?
It's got to at least get.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's off the trim, get the trim off of the wall.
Who cares? Who insures the school buildings? Like who, who's the insurance carrier for E Wilson Morrison? So we carry the insurance?
We're self insured, Bay Corp.
Bay Corp.
We're self insured.
Risk management.
It's like with those trees and some of those things that I sent you the pictures of. If I were writing the underwriting report, you guys would have gotten a letter from me saying, you've got 30 days, fix it or you're dropped. So it's those trees, and I know people don't think it's a big deal, but when you've got trees touching structures and growing in the structures. It compromises the foundation.
Watch it when it does. It'll take 40 years.
Right.
It'll grow right through it. I've seen it too many times.
Yeah, it'll destroy it. Once you notice it, it's too late.
Now honestly, uh, Melanie, I hadn't thought about taking anything out of here just because of the cost of going there. Uh, but you know, again, just from a safety perspective, we've got to start looking at this. The state had guidelines on how close to a building should your plant material be in school. I don't need kids climbing on a roof, you know? I mean, schools have had that happen, so, uh, that's just something I'm struggling with. Getting this stuff. They don't think about it when they want to plant the tree and break it off or whatever. But somewhere down the road, somebody's got to be with it. So, and I know exactly the holly trees.
Yeah. And then the drainage in the back of the school with that downspout where it, it looks like the downspout where it tied into the galvanized line that goes under the sidewalk. It looks like the galvanized line must have collapsed at some point. Now there's corrugated line, but the corrugated line is leaking and it's putting the water directly onto the wall, the exterior wall of the school.
Going down the side there.
Mm-hmm. And it's pooling against the foundation. And then inside the school is the wa, the wall is deteriorating inside the school from the, from the moisture.
That's not on the water.
It's, uh.
It's on the kitchen side. That's what I was thinking.
But then the downspout drains directly down to the sidewalk too. So, you know, come later time, it's a ball hazard.
Get a new downspout fixed that's not corrugated, running across the sidewalk, kind of like. The winter time, we don't want the ice.
No, yeah.
I mean, that's what ends up happening too. So, yeah, there's a lot of site features over there that need to be corrected. We were in the kitchen there yesterday and I've got, out there right back by the kitchen, you stand with that, the kitchen loaded, not to the right. There's three or four old huge railroad timbers that were put there for some reason. I'm trying to figure out what was there or why is this here? It looks like the devil. It's a trip happened. Somebody would drive over at the building, so. As we try to get that cleaned up. Uh, note two, we're getting ready to place the doors on that annex building up back during our safety yard. Last year, you know, wooden doors, we can see daylight through.
Yeah, there's a downspout area there where it's spraying onto the corner of the building and it's rotting.
So I've got doors to replace there. I was hoping I could use some stock doors we have made as roads renovation, but they won't work.
Wow.
I know the nice move, so. There's a lot of little things we're trying to do in the house.
School and the painting inside the bathrooms and the most nice, the floors are beautiful. At school, it's beautiful.
I'm glad you walked it after we had the bathrooms painted.
Yeah, the, the interior, the details, the historic details are just beautiful.
Probably Greg would mention later about Sedexo this summer, some of the projects that they had taken on as far as the flooring, is, is, uh, removing the wax and those type of things at some of our facilities.
We've, uh.
Uh, it's been tremendous. I, I know you'll eventually get to that, but.
Yeah, custodial effort and, and that respect has been a little lackluster from previous years in practice. So they were just waxing it with their, you know, the old rule, Warren didn't, Middle School. Uh, so you have to strip all, you told me about backbreaking, manual labor. Uh, but it's all been coming off and property codes have been put on. So schools should, should, I mean, they do look a lot better for, for working summer cleanings. Uh, that's, that is really what targets should.
I know, outside grounds as we kind of close that up is that, uh, I know the, the contract with the county, I believe that the letter was sent for that grounds to end in April of 2023. So we're going to need as far as, and Mr. Legacy and I, uh, met yesterday and this morning, that we'll probably, uh, during a work session within the next, uh, either like September, probably maybe September is work session, to talk a little bit about some, uh, as a board, which direction you'd like for us to, you know, start looking to be ready for that. We'd like to be at least six months out to be able to start to plan that. Um, I know that it's been a, it's been a, it's been a struggle, uh, for our grounds, uh, the last year or so. And I know the help is, is short on trying to get everything. Um, though, and we, we definitely are going to need the help, the help of the county, uh, on some of these grounds to be able to get us looking the way that we need to look and we're expecting to look, um, to open up schools. So I know those dialogues and conversations are, are happening and those type of things, but, um, we're definitely going to need, need some help on that.
Now, can we, I was told that we had some gardening clubs reach out like two years ago.
We had.
If they could take on.
I remember one and that was, well, I'll be honest, that was my first came. There was one for E Wilson.
Okay.
And Lisa was there and then Shane came the second year, but I never heard anything back from them.
Okay, so we are allowed to seek.
Oh, yeah. No, if we've got a volunteer group or garden club that wants to come in, give us ideas or donations or whatever, yeah.
Or adopt an area or something like that.
We're not getting.
Encourage any of our sports teams to take on activities of service where, you know, you have a day where you encourage your, your football players to come out and, hey, you know, help us pull some weeds, help us lay some mulch. No, I think that's an important thing for kids to learn. As active service workers and not just using, but like getting back.
I would say probable, not probable, I would say from, uh, the, the collective group, like from, uh, top down as far as administratively, A D saying, hey, let's do this. I don't think that initiative has been pushed forward as part of that community service part, uh, being a student athlete. I know that individual coaches themselves have, they have gone out to adopt certain type of projects. I know, uh, a football team years ago, we used to go to, I think it was Len Care and those type of things and just do some activities. Some of our cross country teams and those type of things did some stuff with some of the younger, uh, student, uh, students throughout. But, but definitely to, to adopt whatever that may be, uh, could be their own grounds in the school. It could be another school and those type of things. But I'd be all open and for, uh, you know, people to adopt some of the, those landscaping areas because, uh, it could be beautiful and it's a way also for us to, you know, beautify the grounds, but also have, uh, someone to help take care of those grounds.
That's a good idea.
I like it.
But it's unfortunate, but you know, when we do spec, new school landscape designers come in, the school don't hire landscapers. Schools hire custodians, I mean, so you always have this little battle, this especially areas. It's tough to get it maintained, you know? Me, less plant material I've got around the school, the happier I am. I understand.
I've got holders.
We're changing that.
Yeah, it's been changed.
The green is expensive.
Thank you. It's very expensive.
Look at the hospital, the, the ski slopes in front, and then they got a, a concrete stairway goes up and it zigzags all the way up the hill. I wonder who's going to walk that stairway. Maybe take your ball players over there and have them run that stairway.
There you go, put them on there.
But yeah, green is expensive.
Greg, how about, uh, updating us a little bit of your summer projects?
Just kind of wrap up a little bit. Uh, you know, guys, we try to do as much as we can, uh, for summer projects, whether it's painting, concrete, replacement or whatever, but we're limited funding, uh, you know, we're kind of hesitant. Depends on where you stay in the current fiscal year with what we do, how much money you got left and what you can do that summer before your next year's budget's approved. So, uh, you know, there's, right now, very little opportunity, uh, to get a ton of work done, whether it's contracting, painting or not. But, you know, this year, the restrooms and stairwells at E Wilson were desperately needing paint. Uh, Rested Jeffries Elementary, uh, even though that was just renovated a few years back. You know, we had painting that needed to be done in the restrooms. Uh, got very good pricing with our former contractor. He did it. We knocked it out very nicely. So, because we want the buildings to look as nice inside as we do outside. We did do some in-house painting with our one general maintenance worker, carpenter. We, uh, we are down one person in that category, uh, but, uh, the one person, John, was able to get the A S Rhodes gym painted for us. Exterior painting at Old J Barber, uh, some more, let me see, Old J Barber, Rhodes, what else did he paint? Two, three other places and plus he's doing carpentry repairs and some exterior structures. So, uh, our staff has been pretty busy. I'd love to get more done in the summer. I'd like to be painting, painting and doing everything in every school, every summer. That's the only way to maintain them. But we did get a few things done, as I mentioned. Sedexo's custodial crew this year. And I kind of hammered them a little bit during the whole school year because we knew that these buildings weren't to the level and climbing on this, they shouldn't have been. So especially the floor care program, they're being done like it's been stripped. They're, you know, the old wax and all, you don't have wax over dirt. And we've got a few schools, even the principal often says, oh, I never knew that floor was like. And that's not, I'm not, that's not an exaggeration. That's just the truth. That's how much wax is on them. So they've done an exceptional job.
They've been in for how many years now?
They're entering their third summer.
Yeah.
The first summer with the one July start, you can't expect to do anything. I mean, what do you do in one July?
Who was there before? A D M something?
A D M was in before them and prior to that was G C A, which was acquired by A D M. So, you know, there was no documented processes, floor care. Everybody was doing their own thing. Each school was doing something different. So we kind of changed it. This is the issue. We need consistency. Sure. Everybody's following the same methods and procedures, using the same products, using the same equipment, and it makes a big difference. Uh, restrooms are truly clean. Rested Jeffries were some of the cleanest restrooms I've been in in my career at school, you know? Now, you know, that will last long when school opens here.
They look good now.
They do.
And they're clean. It's like a little small town.
Yeah. From our former teacher, yeah, I, you know.
Each building's like a little town. You got the mayor and.
But now they've done an exceptional job. And I think if you can't get the chance to go out, someone told me today, he said, Greg, A S Rhodes is beautiful. They said, you know, from outside to inside. And as well, that's an easy one to do, but it is. I mean, it's, uh, there are other pieces that, you know, we still need to work on, but, uh, I'm very happy with the staff we have this year, especially with the manpower shortages we have.
And the vacancies that you do have, I know you kind of alluded to them earlier.
We had, still have three vacancies. One, we have an offer out to a plumber. Our plumber retired back in April. Not a busy season for plumbers, but that's a body to end the summer. Uh, a general maintenance worker, we have one out on F and L way. Not sure when he may be returning. Um, and then we have an open H V A C position, which we have a potential candidate for. So like I said, the plumbers do on board before always just out.
Oh, so you have, you hired.
We get, find a one of the options, so. Uh, we're getting those positions filled back and it'll be nice really just in time for the school to open, so. It's a stretch.
It's almost like every school needs a groundskeeper.
You know, nothing we've done. You know what we had in fall here? We had the custodians get the grounds, but each school did their own grounds.
Right.
But that crew did it. Now, we had a lot of equipment costs.
Yeah, it'd be redundant on some of the equipment stuff, but, uh, but as far as taking care of the grounds itself, they should be manicured in that approach. And we do have a couple of schools that possibly, uh, that if one person finished that one, they could help with another one. I'm just thinking like, you know, some of our, our smaller schools and some of them with less greenery, like E Wilson.
But yeah, so we're looking at all that. We want to consider all that when we, you know, start to pick up the remainder next April, you know?
We'd like to start that process, those conversations. Yes, like next month at least.
Yeah. So, and I'll tell you, I'll be honest, I was really worried whether we would get, even get candidates for the groundskeeping positions. But word of mouth seemed to have gotten out there for us. Um, so I was able to get those filled, so. I didn't want to have to continue with the temporary services too long, and it's not cheap, you know?
Okay. Um, I had, I just had that any new business and scheduling the next meeting, I think we, uh, meeting scheduling. I don't know if you have any new business or, um, but scheduling for next meeting, I, I always put that out there, but I think it's as you said, as needed.
That's what we did last time?
Yeah, that's what we've done each time.
One of the things that I want to do is I want to make sure that we include, instead of having the school board, billing committee meeting, and then trying to schedule with the boys supervisors, it's redundant. I think it works better when we just have the supervisors here with us all at the same time.
Well, that's what the last meeting, you and Cheryl were here, right?
Right, yeah.
Cheryl and I, uh, once we get three, we cannot talk, uh, I'd rather have two of us. And Cheryl is, Cheryl is like the lead, I'm like the alternate, and two people is not a problem at all. But once we get past two, it becomes a, an issue. We're trying to not.
Well, I just want to make sure you guys are included in the scheduling of the.
I'm here whenever you tell me.
And perhaps I will resend out an email. I did this with, when Miss Caller said she was unable to be here today to identify a particular, maybe a particular day of the week, maybe even a particular time of the week. If I knew that, that would be really helpful. If there are certain days that you know in your schedule to say, hey, Friday's out, Monday's out, whatever it may be, I'll send an email out and just ask you, is there a particular day of the week, particular time possibly? And then we can just slot that for those particular, I mean, that would be really helpful when I'm trying to schedule.
I like that idea. To be very truthful, uh, just being truthful about it. Um, I run.